Good evening. It's just after 6:30. Welcome to the Thursday, February 9, 2012, meeting of the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals. Let's get started. This meeting is called to order. We call a roll, please.
Timothy Vig.
Here.
Dean Carr. Jeff Ron.
Here.
Joshua Fink. Anne Denny.
Here.
Kate Williams. Dale Patrick.
Here.
John Dunham.
Here.
Deanna Wallad.
Here.
Thank you. We do have a quorum tonight. As you can see, there are a few empty seats that we weren't necessarily expecting. A fully constituted board is nine members. And I'll stutter here for just a minute while an additional board member comes to join us. And for the record, Mr. Fink is here. We now have seven board members present. Let's continue with the agenda. For those of you that didn't see on the way in, in the lobby, there are copies of tonight's agenda and the staff packets as well, if you'd like to grab those and follow along. I don't believe we have any minutes for approval. Special Orders of Business, Executive Sessions, Agenda Item C. Are there any disclosures tonight? Ms. Denny?
Yes, I sit on committee with one of the employees of Sampson Electric that I see on a regular basis.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. And do you feel that relationship rises to the level of a conflict of interest in this case?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Mr. Vig.
Mr. Chairman, Case 2012-023. My firm is involved in some of the site and landscaping work in support of the design of the project. And I feel that that rises to the level of a conflict in my case.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. If a board member could please put forward a motion directing Mr. Vig to participate in Case 2012-023, and then we can open discussion if we need to. Mr. Dunham, thank you for that motion. And do we need a second on that?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the zoning board excuse Mr. Vig from hearing... Which case was that again?
If I might clarify that, the motion needs to be in the positive, so you need to do a motion to direct Mr. Vig to participate in the case.
Okay.
And then if you vote against it...
Which case, then?
It's 2012-023, I believe.
Okay. I move that we allow Mr. Vig to participate in 2012-023.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. And Mr. Fink, thank you for that second.
(inaudible) discussion.
Go ahead. Mr. Fink?
I just seconded it so we can move.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Vig, would you like to further clarify or...
I'm not sure if anything is necessary, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, let's go ahead and vote. And again, the motion is to direct, so a motion in the positive would say that Mr. Vig should participate. And a vote in the negative is to say that he should not participate. Motion passes with six nay votes. Motion fails with six nay votes and one abstaining. Glad we made it through that okay. All right. Any other disclosures tonight? I do have one for the record, although not a conflict of interest. I was formerly employed by the firm representing the petitioner in Case 2012-023. Again, I don't believe that's a conflict of interest, but wanted to state that for the record. All right. Hearing no one else jumping forward with disclosures, let's move ahead. We don't have any appearance requests nor any unfinished business, so let's move on to our regular agenda, which we have nothing for either. Moving right along. Agenda Item H, public hearings. We have three cases before us tonight. The first case, 2012-017. Before we begin with our public hearings, I do need to read for the record our order of business. The Chair shall introduce the variance and explain the procedure to be followed. The variance, case number, and the name of the applicant shall be read into the record. The Board shall hear and rule on any objections to the sufficiency of notice in the case. The Board shall then hear a brief staff presentation outlining the variance, not to exceed 10 minutes. On conclusion of the staff presentation, the Board members and the applicant may then direct questions to the staff through the Chair. The applicant shall then give his or her presentation, again not to exceed 10 minutes. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant, who must convince the Board by a preponderance of the evidence that the variance should be granted. On conclusion of the applicant's presentation, the Board members and the staff may then direct questions through the Chair. Then the hearing shall be opened for public testimony. Each member of the public has three minutes. All persons who testify may be questioned by the Board, by the staff, or by the applicant. On conclusion of public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have the right of rebuttal. The Board shall proceed to develop oral findings and conclusions with regard to the variance and disposition of the variance. The staff shall reduce those oral findings and conclusions to writing for subsequent adoption by the Board at a later meeting. The matter then rests with the Board, and the Chair asks for a positive motion from the Board. All right. Is the petitioner or petitioner's representative in Case 2012-017 Sampson Electric or the owner, J. Cam, present tonight? If so, please indicate that they are here. Thank you. All right. Will staff please provide sufficiency of notice?
Thank you, Chairman Ron. On January 18, 2012, 69 public hearing notices were mailed to surrounding property owners within 600 feet, and the property was posted. At the time this report was written, two comments have been received opposing the variance, but I laid on the table a letter from the person who sent in those two notices retracting their opposition.
Thank you. All right. Hearing no objections, please proceed with your case.
This is Case Number 2012-017. The request is for variance in the I-1 district from AMC 2145-020A to allow a fence in the clear vision area. The department recommendation is that all standards are not substantially met and recommends denial. This site is located on the southwest corner of A Street and B Street. B Street is also referred to as West 55th Avenue in some of the plot plans... Or the Asbilly, sorry. The site is currently used as an electrical contractor office and warehouse for Sampson Electric and is surrounded by light industrial uses and vacant property. A site obscuring fence is installed around the perimeter of the property and is located within the clear vision triangle on the corner of A and B Street. Speaking to the findings, standard number one is not substantially met. There is nothing exceptional about this property, except that the lot is located on a corner and has two frontages. Regarding standard number two, that is also not substantially met. Relocating the fence out of the clear vision triangle would not pose a significant economic hardship. Standard number three, staff finds, is not substantially met. The need to relocate the fence in order to comply with municipal code is only a matter of inconvenience, and the owner will still have ample productive use of their property. Regarding standard number four, we find that that is substantially met. The clear vision triangle provision currently in AMC 2145-020 is a one-size-fits-all standard. It does not take into account the speed on the street, the location of the stop sign, or the location of the built road in relationship to the corner of private property. The Ash-toe site distance triangle is a more sophisticated method that takes into consideration multiple factors in order to determine the required site distance at intersections. According to the municipal traffic engineer, the fence is not located within the Ash-toe site distance triangle. And therefore, the fence is not a traffic safety concern. The traffic engineer notes that the stop sign effectively controls traffic at this intersection, and there is no history of frequent accidents at this location. Standard number six is substantially met. Granting this variance will not change the use of the property. The standard number six is substantially met, as I stated. Regarding standard number four, in addition, the municipal traffic engineer has determined that traffic safety and maneuvering is not significantly impacted by the encroachment of the fence into the clear vision area. Standard number four is... Or, excuse me. Standard number seven is not substantially met. The property owner would have... Continue to have reasonable use of this property. Therefore, the department finds that standards one, two, three, and seven are not substantially met, and therefore, recommendation is for denial. If after the public hearing, the Board establishes findings that the standards are substantially met, we recommend that approval be subject to conditions one and two in the staff packet. I would recommend deleting condition of approval number three. If you find that the fence is not a problem, I don't think relocating the Connex shipping container is necessary either. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Iverson. Does the Board have any questions for staff? I do have a question, Ms. Iverson, and I apologize if you stated this in your presentation, but why are we hearing this case?
There was a code complaint.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Mr. Vig?
Thank you. Ms. Iverson, the intent of the 30-foot clear zone or clear vision triangle is to provide adequate distance for traffic on either of the intersecting streets to see approaching traffic and determine whether it's safe to proceed or turn.
Through the Chair, Commissioner Vig. That's correct. It provide... The point of the clear vision triangle is to provide adequate site distance as cars are trying to turn the corner. And since our code was created in the '80s, they just use this one-size-standard of a 30-foot triangle to address a maximum needed distance.
And thank you. And as Anchorage has developed over the past decades since that was adopted, traffic engineering is adopting a more rigorous analysis of that site distance triangle. Is that accurate?
Through the Chair. The code still exists, that clear vision triangle requirement still exists in code. What we would like to do through the Title 21 rewrite is to change that strict requirement to allow the traffic engineer to have flexibility to use the Ash-toe site distance triangle requirements, which I wouldn't say they're not more strict, they're just more sensitive to how fast the traffic is moving and where the stop sign is actually located in relationship to the intersection. On page 39 of the staff report, there's sort of... On 39 and 40 is a description of... This is taken from the provisionally adopted Title 21 rewrite. It sort of defines how the new site distance triangle would be determined, and you can see that it is much more complicated than just a 30-foot triangle. It takes into consideration where the lanes are and the speed. So it's just a more comprehensive analysis of what's appropriate at a specific intersection.
Thank you. You've answered my question.
Ms. Denny?
Yes, my question is, in the Title 21 rewrite, would this still be a violation?
Through the Chair. It would be up to... The traffic engineer would have administrative discretion to determine what is appropriate, and you would not... It would not need a variance through this commission.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Ms. Iverson. If the petitioner would please come forward. Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
My name is Tony. Last name is spelled N-O-E-T-H-L-I-C-H.
And how is that pronounced?
Nate Lich.
Good evening, Mr. Nate Lich.
Good evening.
Ten minutes for your presentation, and I do ask that you speak to the seven standards that the Board has to decide upon.
Okay. Well, I'm representing Sampson Electric in this variance case. You guys touched on it a little bit already, but the code that we're in violation of is the 21.45.020 clear vision area, which the provisionally adopted Title 21 rewrite will look to eliminate the verbiage that we're in violation of and go to them more of the standard of the site distance in relationship to the speed of the intersecting roads, which the Traffic and Engineering... Or Traffic Safety Department with the Muni has decided we are not in violation of. Just looking to talk about the Title 21 rewrite and how it is updating our current code because it's outdated on a lot of things. It's, you know... This is on Muni's website, talking about how the Title 21 rewrite is to make the code more usable, easier to understand, and just easier to use, basically, instead of the older generation codes. Once that Title 21 rewrite is adopted, the traffic engineer is going to use this standard, which establishes the site distance in the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, the Ash-toe site distance triangle, which we're not in violation of. So... And what I was going to restate, the two complaints, the public comments from my neighbors that were in opposition to this variance have been retracted. He was under the assumption it was a different part of our property on the southeast side of our property, and it's not. It's on the northeast side. So he's retracted that, and I've got that letter in case anybody needed it. These comments I'd like to read are from the Traffic Safety Department from the municipality of Anchorage. Says, "Though the clear vision triangle is encroached by the existing fence at this location, traffic safety and maneuvering shall not be significantly impacted by the approval of this variance due to the following considerations. There is an existing stop sign located at the southwest corner of the intersection of A and 55th adjacent to the parcel in question, which effectively controls the right-of-way. The Ash-toe site distance triangle for this intersection demonstrates that the line of sight is obstructed..." Is... I'm sorry. "is unobstructive for 280 feet in both directions based on the 25 mile-per-hour speed limit." And the MOA accident history data demonstrates no history of frequent accidents at this location due to the existing clear vision triangle encroachment. As far as the standards that MOA has decided were not satisfied, in their opinion. Standard number one is in regards to the physical circumstances and characteristics of the property. And like Ms. Iverson said, we are bordered in between three roads at Potter, A Street, and 55th, and we've got utility easements on two sides of our property, kind of locking us in to where we can't move upwards or outwards at all. Shugatch Electric runs overhead power lines, so we can't stack our containers. That's basically what we use this property for, is storage and parking, so we can't go up or out or anything. Standard number two speaks of undue hardships to the owner depriving the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district. And they've decided that those standards were not substantially met because it would not pose a significant economic hardship. Was... I've looked into relocating the fence to this 30-foot clear vision triangle, and if we were to move it right now, we're looking at over $5,000 to move this section of the fence. So, I mean, I disagree that it's not an economic burden. I mean, that's a lot of money in our eyes. Standard number three that they say was unsatisfied is due to self-imposed circumstances that do not result in the actions of the applicant. When the fence has been there a lot longer than my company has, it's been there for, as much as I can gather, more than a couple decades without any kind of safety and traffic problems in that neighborhood at all. And standard number seven says that the variance, if granted, is the minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the land. And if I have to move the fence at all, it still is the financial burden that we would take on that all of my neighbors throughout the neighborhood won't. And as you can see in the pictures in the application for the variance, almost every intersection in that neighborhood has their fences located in the exact same manner as mine. They're all up to the corner of the property, and as far as I know, there's only one other person that has been talked to about having to move the fence, and the other ones, they've all been there forever also. In closing, I would just like to say at this point that the only thing that I can see making Sampson Electric move our fence is going to accomplish is a financial burden on a local company without a whole lot of basis. I mean, the standard that we're being in violation... Held to in violation of is a code that is admitted by the MOA as being outdated and looking to be replaced to a code that we're not currently in violation of. And the municipality's Traffic and Safety Department, which seems to be the one in control of the decisions in the future on this Anchorage 2020 development plan, says that we're not in violation of what they would consider a safe intersection. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nate Lich. Could hold on just a minute. Any board members have questions for petitioner? Okay. Does staff have any questions for petitioner? Thank you, Mr. Nate Lich.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll open this case for public testimony. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in this case? Okay. Seeing no one, public testimony is closed. You do have an additional three minutes, Mr. Nate Lich. Nothing to rebuttal, but give you the opportunity if you want to say anything else. All right. Mad arrest with the Board. I'll ask a board member to please put forward a positive motion. Go ahead and state your motion, and hopefully we'll get a second.
Mr. Chairman, in the case of 2012-017, I move that we grant a variance from AMC 2145.020A to allow a fence in a clear vision area.
Mr. Dunham, was that in consideration of department recommendations?
Yes, that would be...
One and two, I think?
Department recommendations, one and two, on page seven.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. Mr. Vig, thank you for that second. Mr. Dunham, would you like to speak to your motion?
I'm really not decided at this point on whether or not I'm going to support the motion. I can see the petitioner here has some real valid arguments for granting a variance, I think, because the standard appears to be something that's not well-suited for this particular site and probably not well-suited for most clear vision areas. But I'd like to hear more from other board members on this.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. Mr. Vig, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I too struggle with this one a bit. You know, the fact that there are three street frontages on this property is a bit unusual, and I think it's somewhat exceptional or extraordinary in terms of the physical circumstances. And, you know, the fact that a code that's admittedly a rule-of-thum attempt to address sight vision is being applied to it, I think, is a bit unique. So with regard to standard number one, I think that... I think there's a... That standard's partially met, at least in my mind. Standard number two, strict application of the code. Certainly, we heard the applicant speak to the cost of relocating the fence. I think there's, in this case, also a consideration of the fact that several hundred square feet of usable storage area disappears if the fence has to be relocated. And this being a construction yard and storage, I can understand why security would be a concern in this case. And so I think there's a consideration in addition to just the cost of relocating the So I, you know, I think about other cases we've heard in the past few years I've been on this board that we've been waiting for the provisionally adopted code to take effect, and specifically with regard to the parking requirements. And when a applicant can demonstrate that an applicant's parking demand is within what they can provide, we've seen fit to go along with that. And I think this is a similar situation where the municipal traffic engineer has made a determination that these circumstances are not going to cause a safety problem and would be acceptable. So I'm also interested in other board members' comments, but I think in the past, we've seen our way to accommodate these kinds of situations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Any other board members wishing to comment? Ms. Denny?
Yes, I've been past this particular intersection, and I had no idea that that was even a through street. I don't believe it is. I believe it's an alley that just accesses the couple of properties that abut that road. I have a friend of mine that has a building, at least three buildings, to the north of this property, and I've gone through there very once a week for the last year, and I've never even seen anybody coming out of there. And to apply this code to this particular property where all of the other properties that he's provided pictures of are in the same situation, and to pick this person arbitrarily, I don't think that's very fair, for one thing. And to cause them to lose that much storage space on that lot, having to move the Connex as well as the fence, I think would be a monetary hardship also.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick. I believe that I intend to support the motion as well. I think that Mr. Vig spoke to the same exceptional, extraordinary physical circumstance that I would call out as well, in that this appears to be a peninsula of land surrounded by road, a bit uncommon, more than just uncommon, exceptional in this circumstance. And that leads me to at least support a partial, if not met, result for standard number one. I believe that standard number three... or, excuse me, standard number two was also adequately addressed by Mr. Vig, in that this industrially-zoned property is at a premium in acreage, and the loss of that for the use by the user of the property weighs in on the hardship there, not just the cost of relocating the fence. As far as standard number seven is concerned, this is not an egregious fence. It's been there reportedly for years without problem or results, and don't believe that with the fence in its current location, it creates a use above and beyond what neighboring properties receive. In consideration of the discussion we've had about the ASHTO application, I intend to support the motion. I concur with staff's other findings regarding standards numbers four, five, and six.
Any other discussion? That motion passes with seven yea votes, and I must read for the record. Every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face, it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have thirty days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court. Thank you, Ms. Iverson. All right, so let's move on with our second case this evening, case number 2012-018. Is the petitioner Jennifer and/or Eric Anderson present? They've indicated they are. Good evening. Would staff provide sufficiency of notice, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On January 18th, the division mailed forty-six public hearing notices. As of this writing, one comment was received from the public. The public comment was neither in favor nor against the granting of the variance. That's on page... Let's see, I'll have to look for the page. And then the petitioner provided, supplied a letter from one of their neighbors to the east in support of the granting of the variance. No comments were received from the Bear Valley Community Council.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. And if I'm seeing the comment properly, I think it's on page thirty-six of the staff packet regarding taxes.
Thank you. Yep.
All right. Thank you. Seeing no objection to the sufficiency of notice, please proceed with your presentation.
This is a request for a variance from Anchorage Municipal Code Title 214090C, permitted accessory uses and structures to allow a proposed detached garage, which is an accessory structure, to be larger than the house, which is the principal structure. In this case, the existing house is 2,080 square feet in the R7 district, and therefore, a detached garage is permitted to be no greater than 1,040 square feet. The petitioner proposes to build a garage that is 2,592 square feet, which is approximately 250 percent greater than what is permitted in the R7 district. The planning division finds that standard number one is partially met. The requested variance does not arise from the physical conditions of the land itself, such as creeks, wetlands, slope, steep slope, et cetera, which is peculiar to the land. The subject property is affected by steep slopes and varied topography. However, it's not unique to this property. All the properties on both sides of Payne Road and elsewhere in Bear Valley are affected by steep slopes. Nevertheless, the subject property is affected by a steep slope, which increases the cost of construction. Standard number two, the division finds, is also partially met. An attached garage can be any size, but a detached garage, such as the one proposed by the petitioner, is limited by municipal policy to half the size of the house. Due to topography, enlarging the size of the attached garage would be costly to the petitioner, and therefore, they are proposing a detached garage. Still, it is the proposed size of the detached garage which exceeds the maximum allowed, which is at issue with this case. The subject property is located in the R7 district. Property to the east and west is also zoned R7, and property to the north and south is zoned R10 with special limitations. If the subject... if this petition site was located in the neighboring R10 district, then the proposed detached garage would be permitted as a much larger... they have a lot of property in a much larger... they're limited to 5 percent of the area, up to 5,000 square feet, so they could have the garage that they're proposing if they were... went either to the north or south. Standard number three is partially met. The petitioner argues that the physical conditions of the lot cause the need for the variance. That is the steep slope. The property has an average slope of negative 16 percent with areas of negative 37 percent and negative 21 percent slope. This is a constraint to development, but is not directly related to the need for the The need for the variance is a result of the petitioner's desire to have a second garage that is more than 50 percent the size of the house. The proposed detached garage is 250 percent greater than what is permitted. The request for the variance is self-imposed. Standard number four is met. There are no structure separation violations. Drain-off and runoff do not appear to be issues. There were no objections from neighbors. Standard number five is met. The requested variance is dimensional, not a use variance. The size of the proposed garage will not change the character of the zoning district. Standard six is met. There are no health, identified health and safety issues. Standard number seven is... the division finds is not met, may not be met. The petitioner can make reasonable use of the land without the granting of this variance. A reasonable use of the land already exists with the existing attached garage. And the house has 2,080 square feet, so a detached garage is permitted to be no greater than 1,040 square feet. The proposed 2,592 square-foot garage is 1,552 square feet greater than what is permitted. The department finds that standards one, two, three, and seven are not substantially met, and therefore recommends denial of the variance. If after a public hearing and the board finds that all seven standards are substantially met, the approval recommendations for approval subject to conditions one, two, and three on pages eight and nine of the staff packet. I just want to... the standards one and two are standard... I'm sorry. Conditions of approval, one and two are standard, but the third one, recording a suitable replat. The petitioner is in the process of re-subdividing their property to eliminate the interior lot line, to put their two lots together, essentially reversion acreage, making their lot one lot that's bigger. And that's a very expensive process, that replat process. They're doing that... well, I don't know the... you could ask the petitioner the reasons for... they're doing that, but that will make their lot larger, and I just wanted to point out that it's a costly thing. And that's... it couldn't hap... I'm sorry. The granting of this variance couldn't hap... shouldn't happen until, unless the property is successfully re-subdivided and remove that interior lot line, because you can't have a garage, which is this accessory structure, be a principal structure in the R7. It has to be an accessory in relation to a house. Does that make sense? Thank you for your attention. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Do any board members have questions? Mr. Dunham, go ahead.
Your explanation there of the replat, Mr. McLaughlin, I guess... I think that puts this request in conflict with a use variance request. I know that what you're trying to do is to get the... have the variance for an accessory structure rolled forward without the replat, but it seems to me the replat has to go before you can grant a variance on this. I know you're trying to tie it with a suitable replat, but there's no permitted principal use on that lot. And a replat would eliminate that. You're essentially asking us to grant a variance on a lot that has no principal permitted use. And I know that the condition would apply, but it seems to me like in the past, we've always required that the lot be replatted first.
Through the chair, Mr. Dunham, thank you for raising that question. If the board approves the variance tonight, then the building of... the variance wouldn't go into effect until the property is replatted. And you're not presupposing the decision of the plating board, because this will be a short plat administratively handled by the department. They're entitled to replat the property in this way, as long as they... as long as they record a final plat, then after the recording of that final plat, then they would be entitled to proceed with this variance approval. So the planning division does not find conflict with this.
Mr. Dunham, do you follow it?
I understand it. I don't agree with it, but I understand it. The other question I had for you, Mr. McLaughlin, is did you see any set of plans to indicate what the structure would look like? Has anybody reviewed a set of plans on this?
Through the chair, Mr. Dunham, thank you again for the question. No, I have not seen any plans about the height or the architecture of the building. It'd be a good question for the petitioner. I guess I just assumed that they didn't want to invest a lot of money in designing the structure until after the variance was approved, but I... that was an assumption that I made. I maybe shouldn't have. Thank you.
Any other board member questions for staff? Okay. Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. If the petitioner would please come forward, state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Good evening. I am Jennifer Anderson, spelling is A-N-D-E-R-S-O-N.
Good evening, Ms. Anderson. You'll have ten minutes for your presentation. Again, ask that you speak to the seven standards, perhaps standard that staff has not found has been met, standard seven.
Okay. Good evening. My name's Jennifer. My husband Eric is here with me this evening as well. We'd like to thank the zoning board of examiners and appeals for the opportunity to speak tonight, and thank you to the staff as well of the planning department for their help with our variance application. It's been a learning process for us. My husband Eric and I have lived in Anchorage for twelve years, all of it in our house on Payne Road in Bear Valley. I am employed as a commercial pilot, and Eric is a wildlife photographer. He is self-employed, doing business at Anderson Images. He is licensed here in the municipality of Anchorage. Eric's office and all of his business-related items are in our house. We moved here from Michigan in 2000 as a voluntary relocation for my flying job. We'd been wanting to move to Alaska, so we really welcomed the move. And we love the Bear Valley location for many reasons, but mainly for the ruralness of it. We love the close wilderness, the easy access to great hiking and snowshoeing, the feeling of community we have with great neighbors, all of this while still in the city of Anchorage, and all that the city has to offer as well. But if you ask anyone familiar with Bear Valley, they'll tell you it can be a harsh environment, often with its own microclimate. Last night, for instance, our winter is longer, summer is shorter, and we have lots of snow and numerous windstorms, more so than residents just ten miles down the hill. Last night, we had 66 mile-an-hour winds and rain, but our peak last year was 121 miles an hour. We purchased the lot next to us years ago to the west, and in 2011, late last year, we started the land survey as-built in the short plat subdivision that Mr. McLaughlin referred to, to join our two lots together into one lot. Rather than profiting by selling this land, we prefer to have a larger lot in keeping with the rural feel of the neighborhood. We've prided ourselves in maintaining and improving our home and yard over the years, and we've spent thousands of dollars on the short plat so far and plan on spending much more, if granted, this variance, to build an accessory building for protecting our vehicles and boat. But rather than build the garage illegally and ask for forgiveness later, we are instead going through the formal land use process and following the rules, which is why we're here today. So let me move on to our application. We agree with the planning staff's findings that standards four, five, and six are met. We also believe that standards one, two, three, and seven are substantially met, and I would like to speak to those points. In regards to standard number one, we believe this is fully met. As seen on the topography map on page 10, we have very steep terrain on our property. The average slope is minus 15 percent, but it is steep as 37 percent in numerous areas on the property. Because we are on well and septic, and those were put in place when the house was built in 1997, we are constrained by the location of them and cannot add on to our attached garage. The septic field is on the north side, and the well and the steepest terrain is to the south of the attached garage. Therefore, it must be a detached garage, and that is why we have combined the lots, or in the process of combining the lots, to have the land to build the accessory building or the detached garage. In regards to standard number two, we believe that this is fully met. As I mentioned, because of steep slope, well, and septic, we are forced to build a detached garage. And the garage we would like to build is of the same size as similar to many other garages in the neighborhood, which is Kingsway, Payne Road, and Byron Drive, to name a few. It would offer protection from our harsh climate to our two vehicles, modest boat, and numerous accessories that Eric uses for his business and needs easy access to. Also, properties to the immediate north and south, like Mr. McLaughlin mentioned, are zoned entirely differently than ours, even though our property touches the property to the north. So if we were one lot north or south, as seen on page 11, we would not be here today because the zoning district falls under different codes, and we'd be free to build our desired garage. So we would like to have those same rights or privileges commonly enjoyed by our immediate neighbors and other people in Bear Valley who have the same-sized garages or accessory buildings that we would like, even though we deal with the same terrain, climate, and we have a large lot like they do, and it'll be even larger when we combine them. In regards to standard number three, we believe this standard is fully met. This hardship is not self-imposed. Due to the aforementioned steep slope, location of our house in relation to the well and septic field, these are out of our control and force us to build a detached garage. Yes, if our house were bigger, we could have a bigger accessory building, but we do not need more living space. We need more garage space to protect our vehicles, our boat, and Eric's business accessories. And in regards to standard number seven, we believe we've also fully met this standard. The garage is a normal-sized garage, especially in Alaska, and minimum for a well-built, heated garage for two cars, a boat, and Eric's business accessories. And a really high priority for us is the protection from the elements. Again, if we lived across the street, we would not need to go through this process. There will be no additional dwelling space. This would just strictly be a garage. We believe this to be a very reasonable use of our land, considering how large our lot will be when they're combined, over almost 104,000 square feet. Our house is only 2,000, and with the addition of this desired accessory building, we'd still be using less than 5 percent of our land. Finally, the building site for our garage is well out of the view of all of our neighbors. Due to our house location, the setback from the road, the sloping topography, and thickly wooded natural landscaping to the west of the building site, none of our four neighbors will see this garage from their houses or yards. We plan on building a well-designed garage to match our house and maintain our neighborhood. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I'd like to reserve the rest of my ten minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. You'll have about three... just over three minutes left for rebuttal. If you could hold on just a minute, we may have some questions for you. Do any board members have questions for the petitioner? Mr. Dunham? Mr. Dunham, go ahead.
First, a clarification, Ms. Anderson. On the packet, it says Anderson with an E, and it should be an O. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you for coming tonight. And I wanted to follow up on one of your comments about the business that your husband does. Are you planning to use part of the proposed garage for the home business?
Just for storage.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Do other board members have questions? I do have a question. Ms. Anderson, you mentioned that your vehicles will be stored in the garage, those vehicles that you drive.
Yes.
Regularly. Are they currently in the attached garage?
No, they will not fit in our attached garage. Anybody, you know, in Bear Valley, there's actually a sign that says in the wintertime you need four-wheel drive, and chains are recommended. So we have four-wheel-drive vehicles, and they won't fit in the garage. In our attached garage, the first three or four feet is used by the mechanical equipment of the home, the furnace, the water softener, the water heater, that type of stuff. So it's a little bit shorter than normal. And we've devoted a lot of that attached garage to the storage that would go into this accessory building. Eric has a truck. I have an old Suburban. And so they are sitting outside right now.
Thank you. Any other board member questions? Ms. Denny, go ahead.
If you were approved to build your new garage, would you be taking down the other accessory buildings on your lot?
No, the only other accessory building is a gardening shed.
If there are no other questions by the boards, does staff have any questions for the petitioner?
No, I don't.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. If you'll have a seat, we'll open up the hearing for public testimony. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in this case? If so, please come forward. Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Constance Livsey. My last name is spelled L-I-V-S-E-Y.
Good evening, Ms. Livsey. You'll have three minutes for your testimony. We ask that you speak to those same standards as well.
Thank you. My husband, William Ennis, and I own the home directly across the street to the south of Mr. and Mrs. Anderson's home. It's actually directly to the south of the proposed structure that is the basis for the variance request. Our street address is 8690 Payne Road, and the legal descriptor is Lot 3 Gallagher subdivision. So if you look, for instance, at page 11 of your materials, you can see a house directly to the south, below on your page, of the proposed structure area for the Andersons' garage. And for the sake of accuracy, our home is titled in my husband's name. He built it in 1983 and has resided there ever since, and I've resided there since 1989. I've reviewed Mr. and Mrs. Anderson's application and planning staff analysis. My husband and I oppose the variance request only on the basis of the size of the proposed structure. This is, as Mrs. Anderson indicated, a rural neighborhood. It's a neighborhood of modest, single-family homes. I believe staff indicated their home is about 2,100 square feet. Ours is about 2,300, 2,400 square feet. It's in keeping with the general size of the homes in the area. Almost all of the homes have attached garages. I must respectfully disagree with Mrs. Anderson on that point. They are almost all attached garages. Their neighbors directly to the east recently built a very small detached two-car garage, but that is the exception in the neighborhood. As your staff noted, the code allows for accessory structures to be no more than half the size of the principal building. In their case, that would be 1,040-square-foot garage. And the one that they propose to build is two-and-a-half times larger than the maximum allowed size. That's very, very big for a garage. In fact, most of us would probably consider that to be a smallish warehouse. An industrial-size ancillary structure of that size is very out of character with the kind of development in the neighborhood. We're concerned about the size and potentially the height of a 36-by-72-foot building. We want to be good neighbors. The Andersons do have a lovely home. They have improved it. They have put asphalt paving down. And as one of the other, the aerial photograph shows it, and I believe that page three of your material shows that they have expanded the asphalt apron so that it actually intrudes onto the adjacent lot that they plan to combine. They have several vehicles that they routinely park outside. We understand their desire to have them inside. Bear Valley has atrocious weather. I cramponed down my driveway this morning. So clearly, excuse me, their desire is valid. We request simply that you grant a smaller variance. 1,200, 1,500 square feet is a fairly large garage still, and restrict the height to one story. Thank you, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Livsey. Do any board members have questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Livsey. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to testify? Okay, seeing no one. Rebuttal. Ms. Anderson, would you care to take any of those three minutes you had left?
Yes, I respectfully disagree with a couple of points that Mrs. Ennis did bring up. There are some very large accessory structures on Kingsway. I don't know the exact measurements. I would venture to say that they're 200 to 2,500 square feet. The property directly to the north of us, that house is 5,000 square feet. And there's two others on Payne Road that are over 3,000 square feet. So to say that 2,000 square feet is the average in Bear Valley, I believe is false. There have been very many new developments, new houses that have gone up in recent years that are much bigger than the ones built in the 80s and 90s. Also, we did obtain signatures from our four direct neighbors, not the Ennises, but right next to the Ennises. All of these neighbors, we have stood on their property and looked to our yard and have seen that none of these neighbors will actually see this accessory building. And to Mrs. Ennis's point, we are planning a one-story building. Maximum height by code is 35 feet, and our house doesn't even reach that height. I brought with me four letters from those direct neighbors who all wrote in support of our variance. They could not be here this evening, but all offered to write letters. I have the originals, and I made copies, and I outlined their properties on the zoning map. So I'd like to offer these as record.
Please do. Bring them forward to Jill, and we'll mark them in to the record and need to keep them for 30 days. And you do have about a minute and a half left. If there was anything else, or if you've concluded, we may have some more questions for you.
Yeah, I've concluded. Thank you.
Board members have any additional questions based on the new information that we've heard? Staff have any questions?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. There's no one else from the public wishing to testify. We'll go ahead and close the public testimony. We'll take a moment here while board members take a look at those letters of support. And in that time, hopefully, a board member can conjure up language for a positive motion in the case. Mr. McLaughlin?
Just a point of information for the board. It seems like there are some options that are available to the board. There could be a motion in favor of the granting of the variance. There could be a motion for a granting of a smaller variance. Those are, I guess, some version of one of those two to be voted on. And the motion has to be in the positive, of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. I'll ask a follow-up to that statement about our options available. As written, the variance, if we weren't to alter the language of it at all, it doesn't include dimensions, but assume that it would, by reference, include what's shown on page four of the staff packet as a 72-by-36 square-foot garage. Is that correct?
That is correct, yeah. I just refer to the drawing.
All right. The matter does now rest with the board. I'll ask a board member to put forwards at least one of the options that Mr. McLaughlin has asked for, unless we need further discussion about Mr. Dunham's early questions regarding the order of events. Mr. McLaughlin?
While the board considers a motion, just a little bit more information. So the board could make a motion for approval of the variance. And if there's not a second, then that motion dies. If there is a motion for granting a smaller variance, and that does get a second, then there could be discussion. If they want to change the amendment, and Jill can correct me, there could be a friendly amendment to change it. But what you would not want to do is to, once you actually vote, then the vote is final. Does that make sense? Once a vote is taken, if a motion is made in the positive, and then there's a second, and then there's a vote on that motion, then if the motion were to fail, for instance, then that would be it for the case. Is that correct, Jill?
They get one motion to approve, and then they can modify it by amendment as opposed to friendly amendment.
Okay.
And they can work with the motion on the table and modify it as they see fit. But there wouldn't be a chance for a second motion if either is up or down.
Thank you.
May I call on our parliamentarian to enter the discussion as well. But, Mr. McLaughlin, given your first option there of putting forward a motion, and there is no second, the motion dies on the table, then where does that leave us?
Has to be a second in order to have a motion.
Mr. Vig?
We heard a member of the public testify about the idea that she could support a smaller variance, but we neglected to ask the applicant if that was something that they would entertain. Is there an opportunity for us to reopen that and ask that question?
Actually, even during deliberations, if you need a clarification, you can request somebody to come back up and answer a question, and that's acceptable.
Mr. Vig, if that's something you'd like to do now before deliberation, I'd be happy to call the petitioner back forward for that.
I would like to hear that.
Okay. Ms. Anderson, if you'd come forward. Have you kept up with our discussion here?
Yes.
Okay. And it seems like there may be interest in discussing options for technicalities with the variance as far as size of the accessory structure.
Yes.
Is that something that you, as petitioner, would entertain, the idea of adjusting the dimensional size of the variance request?
Yeah, we would be willing to negotiate about that, yes. I mean, there is a certain minimum size that we would like for the length of the boat and for the truck.
Mr. Vig?
Without attempting to pin you down on a specific number, can you give us an idea of what that would be?
The truck pulling the boat is 57 feet long. And it would please us to have a building that we could drive that into. We're not saying that we would turn down and offer for a different dimension, but that would be our wish.
So your intention, then, is to leave the boat hooked to the truck within the structure? And that's the total length combined, truck and boat, at 57 feet as opposed to a 57-foot-long boat?
Yeah, that's right. The truck pulling the boat is 57 feet long, yeah. And it wouldn't always stay in there like that, no. The truck can be detached from it, obviously.
If any other board members are in the questioning mood, I think now would be a good time.
And to just speak about the topography of the land, if you look at the bottom of our driveway there, that is the flattest area. And that's why a long, skinny structure seemed more logical to us than, say, two- or three-car, you know, wider versus the way we had it planned out in the plot plan there.
Sure. Thank you for the explanation. And, Ms. Anderson, for discussion purposes, I am in the camp that's concerned with the size, the current size of the structure, and appreciate your willingness to reconsider, to some degree, that size. Given its current dimensions, that, to me, isn't a garage. It is, as described by the public, a small warehouse, a shop, and outbuilding. That is quite large. So again, thank you for making consideration of size.
We do agree that it is large, but we also agree that our neighbors, direct neighbors, our property is touching theirs, could build this structure without having to go through this process. And we would just like to be afforded the same privileges.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Let's see if we have any more questions here for you. Ms. McLaughlin?
Mr. Chair, the petitioner's just stated that 57 feet would be needed to have the boat and the truck tandem. So if we look at the dimensions on page four of the proposed garage, it's 72 feet by 36 feet. So if we reduce the 72 feet down to 57 feet, so 57 times 36, that comes out to 2,052 square feet. Just to give us an idea, if the board considers reducing the size to the suggested dimensions there, 57 by 36, and it comes out to 2,052 square feet. Just getting ideas on what it means.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. And that 2,052 square feet is slightly smaller than the principal structure, 2,080 square feet?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other board member questions for the petitioner regarding the discussion on modifying the variance request? Ms. Patrick?
I do have a question. You said that 57 foot, that's basically bumper to outward, right?
That's correct. There's a swim step on the back, so 57 feet. Mr. Chairman, may I speak to something that was mentioned earlier?
Unfortunately, Ms. Anderson.
It's a question somebody raised, and I can answer it, but...
Okay. Okay, unfortunately, we can only ask you to respond to questions related to Mr. Vig's discussion. But thank you for answering. All right, seeing no further questions by board members, thank you. We'll, again, consider this a matter that rests with the board, and I'll ask a board member for a positive motion. And again, a motion just gets us one step closer to perhaps more discussion, so... Mr. Vig, thank you. Please go ahead and state your motion.
I'll see what I can come up with. In case number 2012-018, I move that we grant a variance from AMC 2140090C, permitted accessory uses and structures in the R7 district to allow a proposed detached garage to be 75% of the square foot area of the principal structure, subject to conditions 1, 2, and 3 as noted in the staff packet.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Ms. Denny, would you like to second that motion?
Yes, I would.
All right, Mr. Vig, please speak to the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can see some rationale for finding standard number one as being at least partially met, if not substantially, due to the topographic situation that the lot is situated on. And attempting to add an accessory structure detached requires, because of the condition or the configuration of their principal structure, that it probably has to be in the location that they're showing. So I believe that that could be found to be substantially met. Standard number two, a strict application of the code, I believe could create an undue hardship in preventing them from being able to enjoy similar benefits of other property owners in the area. Standard number three, I have a little bit of difficulty with that, but I'd be interested to hear from some other board members perhaps on that. I concur with staff's findings in four, five, and six. The one that I have the issue with is standard number seven, and that it be the minimum variance that makes possibly reasonable use of the land. And that's why I proposed the motion I did to 75% of the square foot area of the principal structure, which is approximately 1,560 square feet. And would, if they maintained the same 36-foot width, excuse me while I punch this in, gives a 43-foot length. And I think that it's reasonable to expect that storing a boat and a fairly large vehicle attached or hitched up is not a typical situation. And I think few people expect to be able to do that in their accessory structures, and so I think that is a little excessive. And I think backing off of that, the length of the truck still provides plenty of length for the boat, and the width, 36 feet, should be sufficient for side-by-side parking of both of those plus storage. So that's my rationale.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Appreciate the motion. If I could, before Ms. Denny, give you the floor, add a friendly amendment. I believe you said 75%. All right, if I could be so bold as to ask one of my fellow board members for a friendly amendment, since I can't do that myself. I'll retract that for now, then we'll deal with it as it is with the second. Believe it or not, I'm not new here, guys. I'll retract my push for an amendment. I don't think it's absolutely necessary. I think we'll all understand the motion as it was stated by Mr. Vig, so we're fine there. Ms. Denny, if you'd like to speak to the motion, please do so.
Thank you. I do agree with Mr. Vig in that the topography does limit the location. However, I would not have agreed to supporting a motion with the garage, the size that the petitioner had originally asked for. And I will, I do intend to support the motion with a reduced size in the garage.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. Mr. Dunham.
Mr. Chairman, I don't intend to support this motion for a couple of reasons. The first being that I don't believe all the conditions are met. I do believe this is a self-imposed hardship. I think that, you know, if you look at the numbers and you figure out what it would take to park a, two large four-wheel-drive vehicles and a boat, you could easily park those in a 1,000-square-foot building, which I think would be more than enough for this type of facility. But the other, and that I don't believe that it's a minimum variance either. The other issue I have is that we haven't seen what the building's actually going to be like. We're trying to design this building for the petitioners. The petitioners have requested one size. We're suggesting another size, neither of which has a floor plan in front of us, so we don't know what other uses are going on in there. We heard some information from the petitioner about a home occupation. I don't know if there are any issues there. I'm not suggesting that there are, but without a set of plans, I'm not comfortable granting a variance.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. Would any other board members care to weigh in? Ms. Wad.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you very much for your thorough explanation. Struggling with this one a little bit for same reasons as the other individuals have pointed out. I also have to consider that if this property was purchased by an independent individual, the size of the structure could be substantially larger. And I don't know if staff can tell us what size that structure could be if Lot 6 was purchased as an independent site for a home, home and garage. What's the maximum square footage?
Through the chair, Ms. Lad, could you repeat that question? I didn't catch that.
Just for comparison and consideration, if Lot 6 had been purchased by an independent and a home and garage was being built, I'd like to know what the maximum square footage is that could be on that lot based on the size.
Well, this is the tricky thing about this case. In the R10 district, an accessory, a detached accessory structure is limited to 5% of the lot, up to 5,000 square feet. But in this district, the R7 district, they simply, any detached structure is limited to 50% the size of the house. So that didn't directly answer, I wasn't able to answer your question.
And I understand that.
It's the function of the house, function of the size of the house.
Okay. Perhaps I've made my point, is I think that it's difficult to limit, it's part of my consideration of this case, is that had this been a totally independent owner and project, it could be substantially larger for the neighbors than what they're proposing. So I just want that to weigh in as we consider potentially what the limitations are on the variance. I do understand that the standards are what we need to look at, and so that really is our limitation. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett, did you have a comment?
Mr. Chairman, I just, Mr. Chairman, I thought I'd take a stab at Ms. Vlad's question just using gross numbers. If one of the lots were sold independently, and it's approximately 51,500 square feet in size, lot coverage is all that would govern the size of a structure that could be built there. So someone could build a house and attached garage approximately 30% of that lot size. So just do the math yourselves. 30% times 50,000, that's, could be a very large structure.
Mr. Fink.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a tough one for me as well, and I appreciate the comments by the different board members and staff. I'm glad Mr. Vig moved it the way he did, with 75% of the lot coverage, if I understood that correctly. I think I'm going to support the motion. Something else that doesn't directly go to the, directly go to the standards, but the fact that most of the neighbors seem to be supportive, that weighs in, and I think it's important that they submitted some letters with regard to that. And I, I think that the motion's a fair compromise, and I think the standards are met. So I intend to support it.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. And for clarification, so that I'm understanding the motion before is correctly, it's 75% of the size of the principal structure that we'd be allowing for the accessory structure. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And to explain my apparent confusion earlier about the friendly amendment versus amendment, I had consideration of qualifying size of the principal structure as existing principal structure, in that if down the road, principal structure were increased in size prior to construction of that accessory structure, that we'd be still talking about 75% in current relative terms. But if no other board member sees that as being an issue, then let it go by the wayside.
Actually, I had thought of that after I'd made the motion and realized that there could be additions to the existing principal structure. And so, if I may revise the motion to phrase it in terms of the existing principal structure, 2,080 square feet.
Does that require a formal amendment if the mover does? Okay. Okay, sure.
I think the amendment probably would be better.
I'd be interested if a board member would care to make an amendment to that rather than me offer it as a clarification.
So if another board member could make an amendment as stated by Mr. Vig, then we can either approve or deny that amendment to the motion, and then vote on the motion. Ms. Patrick.
I make the proposal to amend the motion to 75% of 2,080 square feet.
And I'll accept that.
Of existing, yes. 2,080 square feet.
I accept his amendment.
Unfortunately, we can't do the friendly amendment route anymore, so we're going to need to second and discuss, if necessary, vote, and then get back to the motion. That was my earlier hang-up. Can't be friendly anymore. So a second on that amendment. Mr. Fink, thank you. Any discussion necessary?
Just a question on the amendment. I mean, might some future owner build another residence under the code and be limited or restricted in building what otherwise might be a legal-sized garage if we pass this? I mean, are we, are we permanent, I'm not sure we've thought through all the ramifications of the amendment, I guess if someone could address that.
Mr. McLaughlin, were you going to speak to that, or something?
Yes, the chair. Mr. Fink, that's an excellent question. No, this variance would not, if the principal structure was dramatically increased, they would still be subject to the regulations or the municipal policy, which is 50% the size of the principal structure. And so if that exceeded what you guys, with the board, is granting of 75% of the existing structure, they would be able to increase the size of the garage, as long as it was less than 50% the size of the principal structure.
With that clarification, I'm, I'm amendment.
Mr. Fink. All right, and a discussion on the amendment to qualify Mr. Vig's original motion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on that amendment, please. All right, and the amendment passes with six yea votes. And Jill, if you could read for the record what that current motion reads.
So in case 2012-8018, move we grant a variance from AMC 2140909C, permitted accessory uses and structures in the R7 district to allow a proposed attached garage to be 75% of the square foot area of the principal structure, subject to conditions 1, 2, and 3 as noted in the staff packet, and modified to be 75%, actually, that would read 75% of the 2,080 square feet of the principal structure. Is that correct?
All right, I think we're where we intended to be. All right, we still have the motion on the table, and that motion is to grant the variance itself. Is there any other discussion necessary before we move to vote? Mr. Dunham, go ahead.
Yes, subject to conditions 1, 2, and 3 as noted in the staff packet.
Thank you, Ms. Dunham. Pending any further discussion, let's go ahead and vote on the motion. Motion passes with six yea votes and one nay vote. Shall read for the record, every final decision the board shall clearly state on its face that it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court. Thank you to members of the public and the petitioners for bearing with us tonight. And thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, as well. Couldn't have done it without you. If it's all right with other board members, I'd like to take a five-minute recess, and I believe that Mr. Vig, recusing himself, will be taking off for the rest of the evening.
If I can be excused?
Indeed.
Thanks.
Drive safely. Five minutes. All right, let's go ahead and reconvene. All right, let's go ahead and reconvene. Our final case for the evening is case number two thousand twelve dash zero two three. Is the petitioner University of Alaska, or their duly-appointed representative here tonight? If so, please indicate they're here. All right, somebody in the audience willing to claim that. Good evening. Ms. Ferguson, would you please provide the sufficiency of notice in this case?
Yes, there were thirty-one public hearing notices mailed out on January eighteenth. We didn't receive any, any of them back.
Thank you. When you're ready, please go ahead and proceed with your presentation.
The request is to allow, is to allow shared parking for the, for UAA. However, joint parking is prohibited if the street separating a use from its parking is designated in the OS and HP as a higher designation than a collector. Total required parking for the new arena is fourteen hundred spaces. A portion of the shared parking spaces are located on the north side of Providence Drive, which is designated as a minor arterial, which is a higher designation than a collector. Exhibit A, parking diagram of the submittal, indicates that three hundred and eighty required parking spaces are located on the north side of the minor arterial. As for the findings, number one, the standard is partially met. The physical circumstances of the classification of Providence Drive as a minor arterial and its location in the universities and medical district is a circumstance that UAA cannot alter, although this physical circumstance is applicable to other land in the same district. Number two, the standard is not substantially met. The existence of Providence Drive and its classification as a minor arterial does not create an exceptional or undue hardship upon the property owner or deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district. The street is a man-made condition, and the large arena requires fourteen hundred parking spaces. The desire of the applicant to place the arena at this location is a conscious decision. Strict application of the prohibition in the code against shared parking spaces separated by an arterial would not deprive the owner of the common rights of enjoyment shared by the neighborhood. Number three, the standard is not substantially met. There are no physical conditions affecting the lot and related to the need for the variance. The hardship is self-imposed, as the university has selected a location for the sports arena that does not have adequate parking space on-site to accommodate the parking needs for the proposed sports events. The need for the variance is a result of the actions of the applicant. The university has a conforming alternative. A parking garage could be constructed on-site to serve the parking needs of the facility. This would be a heavy expense for the university, given their assertion that shared parking would be needed for no more than ten events per year. The expense would constitute inconvenience. Number four, the standard is substantially met. And with this one, I do have to make a modification, a correction to what I had written here previously. I had been given to understand that there was a shared parking agreement between Providence Medical Center and UAA. The petitioner was before the Urban Design Commission last night for a site plan approval and a concept landscape review. Though, at that meeting last night, there was a representative from Providence who came to the meeting and stated that there was no shared parking agreement between UAA and Providence Hospital for UAA to use their parking garages and surface parking lot at this time. However, he did go on to say that they are in, are in the process of attempting to work out the details of that agreement. Number five, the standard is substantially met. Granting a variance for shared parking spaces that require sports events patrons to cross an arterial either on foot or by shuttle bus does not change the character of the zoning district. As for number six, the standard is substantially met. An administrative waiver has been approved by the MOA Traffic Engineer and the Director of Community Development for shared parking spaces that are located at distance greater than eight hundred feet. The approval of the waiver is an indication that the access between the facility and a shared parking space is not, is not detrimental to the public welfare, given the factors such as the pedestrian environment and the availability of valet parking, or in this case, shuttle, shuttle buses. There is a need to provide a sidewalk on the west side of Alumni Drive slash Wellness Drive. Wellness Drive, the name of the street south of Providence Drive is called Wellness. When you go to the north side of Providence Drive, that same road, the name changes to Alumni Drive, just for clarification. There's a need to provide a sidewalk on the west side of Alumni Drive slash Wellness Drive from Providence Drive north to the driveway entrance to the Consortium Library, with a connecting path from the southeast corner of the library parking lot out to that sidewalk. If you wish, later I can go over exactly what that means by looking at some of the drawings in the packet. Area photos of the Consortium Library site seem to indicate that a sidewalk exists from the intersection about three-quarters of the way to the corner of the parking lot, but the photos are not conclusive. Game patrons or those attending graduation ceremonies who park in the eastern half of the parking lot will not walk to the west side of the parking lot to use the new pedestrian connection that UAA intends to construct as shown on Exhibit B. Number seven, the variance is partially met. The university has a conforming alternative. A parking garage could be constructed on-site to serve the parking needs of the facility. This would be a heavy expense for the university, given their assertion that shared parking would be needed for no more than ten events per year. The expense would constitute inconvenience. The granting of the variance to allow parking spaces that require patrons to cross an arterial is, is a minimal impact which will help to allow a reasonable use of the property. The standards are not substantially met. The department recommends denial. However, should the board establish that findings for each of the seven standards are substantially met, the department recommends conditions of approval on pages seven and eight of the packet.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Do any board members have questions for staff?
No, off the road.
Mr. Fink, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I did have a quick question. There were two, two questions posed to the university on page fifteen.
On page fifteen.
One addresses pedestrian overpass, the second one addresses snow removal. Were either of those questions answered, or any response given?
No, we don't have an answer to those questions, but I'm sure the petitioners could provide an answer.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? I do have a question, Ms. Ferguson. Thank you for the update regarding the shared parking approval not being on the record yet. Would the department concur with an additional recommendation, speaking to finalization of that shared parking agreement?
Yes, the, this request for a variance would have to be contingent on the successful acquisition of that shared parking agreement with Providence Medical Center.
So would we need to formalize that as an additional department recommendation, or is it?
Yes, I believe you would.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dunham, go ahead.
Yes, Ms. Ferguson, your condition number three talks about location and design of a sidewalk. Would you also address maintenance in that resolution as well?
Yes, if, if you cared to, then, yes, it would have to be maintained throughout the year during winter snow conditions also. I think many of their events are basketball, which will occur during the wintertime, and there will be a need for snow clearance of the sidewalks for pedestrians. And condition number five also speaks to the need for lighting along that pedestrian facility.
Okay. All right, thank you.
For clarification, Ms. Ferguson, I apologize for not understanding this at first glance. Department of Recommendation number five, can you point me to a map showing the location of that recommendation, where exactly those consistent pedestrian facilities would need to be provided?
Yes, I can. If you look on page fourteen, you're looking at the intersection. Most of it is Alumni Drive to the north, and to the left you'll see the Consortium Library, and then the parking lot for the library to the east of the library. Where that circle is drawing, it says existing sidewalk, that's pretty close to that intersection. And so it looks like, from what we can determine from looking at the aerial photographs, that there may be a short section of sidewalk, but we can't tell whether or not it continues past that point. And what the condition is asking for is that there be a sidewalk from that intersection on the north side of Providence Drive up the west side of Alumni Drive, which is that street there, that would go up to that first driveway into the parking lot.
So all of those improvements then are on the, the north side of Providence Drive?
Yes. So that people who park, because the Consortium Library parking is part of the shared parking agreement, so when people come, they will be assigned parking spaces. Apparently, it's been explained to us, when you purchase your ticket, they will automatically tell you where your parking spot is located, so you'll know that you've got a ticket at seat so-and-so, and you're to park at the Consortium parking lot. So anyone parking there will walk from there to the sports arena.
Thank you for walking me through that, Ms. Ferguson.
And it also says, just for clarification, on the same page, it says new, new connection proposed in application, it's that box to the left, the lower left-hand hand. And that is a, a connection that doesn't now exist, but UAA has already agreed that they do need to provide that parking, that, sorry, that pedestrian connection. So there will be, you know, at this Consortium Library parking lot, there will be two proposed pedestrian connections.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Do any other board members have questions for staff at this time? Saying none, thank you, Ms. Ferguson, for your presentation. If the petitioner would please come forward, please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Good evening, I'm Chris Turletis, T is in Thomas, U R L E T is in Thomas, E S. I'm the associate vice chancellor for facilities at UAA. So I want to thank you first for serving as volunteer on this important municipal board. You know, it takes a lot of time and effort, and, and I appreciate you doing that. And I also want to thank you for hearing our case tonight. I'm joined here by our staff and several of our consultant firms that have been assisting us on this exciting project, and you'll hear from them during the Q and A session and during some of the technical testimony. We're here to get your approval of, on this shared parking variance. Our new Sea Wolf Center arena, our, our presentation, our Q and As, our rebuttals are all intended to convince you to approve this request. Your approval allows us to continue on with, with this exciting project. It, it's been long envisioned, long in planning, a long-required capability and enhancement to our campus and to our community. This fifty-six-hundred-capacity arena enjoys wide community support. It's been endorsed by the mayor. It was fully funded at a hundred and nine million dollars through both legislative action and through the geo-bond of a couple of years ago. We call it an arena, but it's more than that. It gets daily use by our athletic department, our athletic teams. It serves as the campus for recreation, for intramural events, for both staff and faculty. It'll serve students in the community for social events, concerts, sock hops, if you will, and, and athletic events. In the first years of operation, we expect the number of capacity events to be about ten a year. Most of the time, the facility will operate with, with the provided onsite, onsite parking. We've been actively coordinating, planning, and designing this project in, in some configuration for eight years with the community, with the municipal and DOT participation. So we've been at this for a while. Through the community process, we actually relocated the site from just south of East High School on UAA property to the location that you see now. The site is a high-value building site for UAA. It's close to student housing, it's accessible to staff, faculty, and, and the community. It'll be a major node for our campus shuttle system. One of the sustainable community planning initiatives that came up a couple of years ago was the notion of shared parking to minimize the footprint of, of parking, of share, of built facilities on our campus. It also allows us to, to, in the, in the UMed district, to, to share facilities, allows us to be good stewards of, of state funds. It has resulted in the plan that we, we brought for you today, and relies on the variance to cross Providence Drive at a controlled intersection, so we can use our existing campus parking facilities. Last month, we were somewhat surprised when the uni determined that the variance would not be granted administratively, but would, would be brought to this board. We were even more surprised this week when, when the staff recommended to deny the variance. This has been something we've discussed for a lot of years and, and had municipal support. UDC approved the site plan last night pending your action. We believe there is a more than sufficient basis for you to approve this variance. Our architect, Michael Carlson, with McCool Carlson-Green, will walk through the findings of, of the staff.
All right. Thank you, Chris. It's Michael Carlson, C A R L S O N. I'm with McCool Carlson-Green Architects, and I'm here representing UA tonight. As described in the staff report, the essence of this approval is to locate parking spaces, actually a hundred and fifty-four spaces, not the three hundred and some that Sharon mentioned. And we can have our parking expert, Phil, come up and walk you through that a little bit later if you want him to. But it's actually one hundred and fifty-four spaces of the required fourteen hundred parking spaces for the arena on a lot north of Providence Drive. That requires crossing of a minor arterial, and that's why we're here. As Chris mentioned, we believe that this variance request meets the seven standards, should be approved tonight. And I'm just going to quickly go through the seven standards, and then we'll go to Q and A.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. You have about four and a half minutes for your knowledge left for your presentation. If you'd like to reserve time for rebuttal, please let me know.
All right, we'll, we'll get through it as quick as I can here. Standard one relates to exceptional circumstances. As stated by staff, the classification of the Providence Drive is, is an, as an arterial is not a condition that's under the control of UAA. I'll talk a little bit about that later. This section of Providence Drive is a minor arterial, low-traffic volumes, and actually the traffic volumes after our project completed will go down from what it is today. Second item, it was related to whether this strict application would create an undue hardship. We believe it does for a couple of reasons. First is that it limits UA's ability to grow as an integrated campus. This campus, like all college campuses, is a collection of highly This campus, like all college campuses, is a collection of highly interrelated buildings, roads, pathways, parking, and facilities, and open spaces. And sharing and connecting those resources is a key component to good college planning. MOA has been very supportive of this in the past. That is evidenced by the Health Sciences Building and Housing, which are located across Providence Drive from the main campus. Strict application of this provision would make these arterials barriers to this integrated planning process and would be a severe hardship, not only for this project, but also for future planning projects for UAA campus and any large campus project, to have to treat those arterials as barriers to sharing these parking resources. Second reason is that the alternative solution, construction of a parking garage, would be extremely expensive. It's not currently funded and has very limited utility or public benefit. Current projections show, as Chris said, that capacity events might happen 10 times a year. And the strict application of this ordinance would delay this project a year, require significant public funding, additional public funding, and would create no significant benefit to the public. Considering our plan's operationally sound and provides reasonable safety and the impacts and additional expense that denying this variance would create, we consider both undue and unnecessary. The third item is the hardship self-imposed, and it's not. And we've got a couple of reasons for you to consider on that. First, again, UAA didn't create the arterial designation in the first place. In fact, when UAA was founded and the property was originally acquired, it was not an arterial. It became an arterial as traffic volumes grew. The termination was made by the municipality, imposed on the university by the municipality. And so it's a condition that they have to live with, certainly not a self-imposed condition by any stretch of the imagination. The second point is that the selection of the site and the planning process was not a unilateral, self-serving process by the university. It involved the public. It involved the neighbors. It involved surrounding properties. It considered the needs of the public and MOA traffic system. And in fact, as Chris mentioned, the site was moved from the Northern Lights site in consideration for the recreation facilities that were valued by the community. The site development was developed specifically in collaboration with municipality and DOT to reduce safety issues on Elmore. And there was one other thing I had there, but we'll just move on. The point being that this was a process that focused on creating the most good for the public and for the district and Providence access. That's the other thing that I mentioned. This greatly improves access to Providence as well. So in characterizing this process as a self-serving process that is self-imposed hardship seems to us to be both inaccurate and inappropriate. The last, in case I get cut off, we'll just say the last four conditions we all agree with. There are no adverse effects to adjacent property. It maintains the character, addresses health and safety, and it's certainly a reasonable application of this for the property itself. So we look forward to your approval on this so that we can continue on. We have no problem with the staff comments. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Board members have any questions for petitioner? Mr. Fink?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Same question I had for Ms. Ferguson, and I imagine one of the obvious answers would be cost. But has UAA considered the pedestrian overpass? I mean, was that looked at?
Yes, they have. And that was part of our planning process. We've actually set the building up to accept a direct second-level connection to the pedestrian overpass. The levels of pedestrian traffic at this point in time and budgeting for this project didn't drive that decision, much as it did at Health Sciences. Health Sciences Building, the new Health Sciences Building is set up so that it can, pedestrian bridge can be done in the future. But as part of this initial project, the pedestrian bridge was not deemed to be warranted.
Thank you, Ms. Fink. Ms. Denny?
Yes, you mentioned that the variance is only, you're requiring only 140 additional spaces across Providence Drive to the north side.
That was 154.
154. Where did the reduction from 380 factor in? Is that contingent on shared parking?
No, I think it was just a misunderstanding or a miscounting. Maybe our documents weren't quite clear enough. Phil's here. He can show you the chart and talk through that. This is Phil Worth from Kittleson Associates. He did both our traffic planning as well as the parking analysis and parking planning for the project, so.
Thank you, Mike. Philip Worth, for the record. I believe it is just a misunderstanding. The actual number is 154. The parking spaces located north of Providence, combined with the balance of spaces south of Providence, meets the 1,400 space requirement. And we have illustrations that can demonstrate that for you if you'd like.
So you're not counting in any Providence spots?
Within the count south of Providence is an anticipation of an agreement with Providence to share 500 of their spaces on their site during our major events and sharing our parking spaces on our site for their use during other times. That, as noted earlier, that parking agreement is being formalized now.
Thank you.
Mr. Dunham?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I had a question about the, will there be a charge for the parking or will it be free?
Part of the municipal requirement is that we do a transportation plan, a parking plan for events. And so the expectation is closer you are to the building, the more expensive the parking. We talked a little bit about the parking comes with your ticket, so depending on if it's a shootout or it's graduation. So in some instances, there will be paid parking. In some instances, there won't be, depending on the event, depending on the expected crowd and whatnot. So there, I mean, there is campus parking fee now. At seven o'clock at night, it goes off. We do expect some events will charge for parking.
Thank you.
I do have a question. I'm not sure, Mr. Worth, it may be for you. Mr. Carlson made the statement during his testimony that traffic volumes may actually decrease with construction of this facility. Could you walk me through the logic there?
Certainly. Let me pull up a graphic that may help me explain to you. In fact, I'll just quickly talk you through what you're seeing and then I'll get to the graphic that should aid us. So this is the UMed district in total. The dashed red line that you see there is, in fact, the campus boundary. And the faint blue box that looks clearer up there and then up there is, just to give you an orientation of where is the site. This is just zooming in a little bit closer, giving you a little bit better feel of the site. The star happens to be located at the intersection of Providence Drive and Alumni/Wellness. That would be the pedestrian crossing that we're talking about, that would grant access to these spaces north of Providence. This is just an image of the site plan. Now, if you'd repeat your question for me again, so I'm sure I get it correct.
Sure, sure. Mr. Carlson made mention in his testimony that traffic volumes would decrease after construction at this site of the facility.
Okay. The way it works is this, as you look at this image, so the street that's running east or west at the top of the graphic, that's Providence Drive. And the street running north-south on the right side of the graphic is Elmore. A new street is proposed to be constructed with the site development. It's the street that has kind of a curve linear alignment and intersects with Providence at a proposed, pardon me, intersects with Elmore at a proposed roundabout. Thank you, Chris. We refer to that as Health Drive. It's an extension of an existing roadway on the Providence Medical Center site, also known as Health. What we would be providing therefore is direct access from Providence Medical Center to Elmore. Today, all of those people that, in fact, park in the two parking structures immediately west of Wellness, Chris just showed you, all of those people empty out on Wellness, go north to Providence, and then make a decision whether they ultimately want to go to Elmore or want to go to the west. Any that want to go to Elmore have to travel on Providence and then go south on Elmore. That's how they do it today. In the future, with this project and with the construction of the Health Extension, as we call it, they will be able to go directly along Health to the roundabout that you see and then turn and go south. That relieves then the traffic that's up on Providence, brings it down to Health. That's the net benefit that's realized, and that's how, even with the development, we in fact see lower traffic volumes on Providence. And this would be true particularly during typical weekday PM peak hour times of the day, when the majority of traffic is happening on the system. Later in the evening, when we're having an event at the arena, traffic is already dissipated to the point where the system is operating much better than during peak times. Did that, did I explain that well enough to make sense?
I believe so. Did for me at least. Any board members have questions on that topic? No, thank you for the explanation. Now, during the events themselves, when traffic will, I assume, peak, have your studies looked at what impact there will be on existing streets based on that peak traffic, where those traffic trips start from and obviously end?
Absolutely. So first, we did a pretty extensive traffic impact analysis. We did that under the direction of the municipality and the DOT. That report has been submitted and has been officially accepted by both agencies. So they've deemed our analysis to be complete and accurate. And the analysis and findings indicate that the transportation system with the planned improvements that you're seeing here will bring about an adequate transportation system, both under typical weekday PM peak hour conditions as well as during major events at the arena. And when I say major, I mean a full-capacity event. So under that worst-case condition, we've shown that the transportation system will work acceptably in accordance with municipality and state DOT standards.
Before you let Phil go, I was just reminded that the staff conditions, here's something he can speak to as well. There is one that we would like to have removed, and that is the spillover calculation. Can't, can we do that later? Number four. Provide analysis which demonstrates the spillover parking shall not be, in fact, surrounding parking. Can you address that?
Mr. Fink, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, would it make it easier if I asked him to explain how they'd address condition number?
Please do, otherwise we'll all make an exception, but sure.
Okay. Would you, Mr. Ward, Mr. Carlson, whoever wants to address that, explain how you would address the requested condition number four?
Thank you for the question. It's in fact already addressed in how we prepared the traffic impact study, which shows, among other things, the adequacy of the parking system that's in place today. So what we were able to do was to literally go out and survey parking utilization during different times of the day. And in particular, we focused on those times of the day when we would want to be using the parking to accommodate a major event at the arena. And we found that in the parking structures that Providence is expressing a willingness to share with us, as well as in adjacent parking facilities near the library and other areas on the UAA campus, there's more than adequate and available parking to meet the demands of the arena, even under a major event, such that we don't expect and see any reason for spillover parking to areas, for example, east of Elmore, which would be a long distance to walk in adverse conditions when there's proximate and available parking that's easier to access and served by shuttle, as well as direct pedestrian access to the site.
Thank you for that response. Any other questions by the board? I do have a few more, but don't want to take away anybody's thought process by continuing to talk. In the petitioner's application in response to standard number two, there's direct explication of the fact that, quote-unquote, "the intent of this code is to protect pedestrians and avoid pedestrian crossing demands on collector arterial streets that would compromise carrying capacity of said streets during critical periods of operation." In framing this, not necessarily in critical periods of operation during daytime hours, but during those peak events in which the spaces are needed and the arena is occupied, my concern is with just that protection of pedestrian welfare and safety. And it follows up on Mr. Fink's question, and the response was fairly vague in that well. The cost just wasn't justified. So if you could please speak to that a little bit more, I would appreciate it.
So I'll start and I'll let Phil kick in here. So right now, the preponderance of our events are going to be parking in the parking that the site provides, plus the Providence parking garage that's available, this is staff parking garage available in the evening. You see the corridor walkway that pretty much goes through the building from our parking out to campus. This is a direct path to a already designed intersection. The peak traffic that's on this road, and Phil can correct me here, but is usually the, you know, the Providence shift change or the 4:30 to 5:30 traffic. Our events are generally at seven o'clock, so this has settled down. This is a well-used intersection all times of the day. It's striped for pedestrian. It has pedestrian controls and is used that way all day, every day, as is. The design of the building allows for a future connection that would be spine. And those of you that have been on campus, one of the organization features of campus is our spine. But that is not funded as part of this project, but we envision it at some point, when this is in heavier use more frequently than 10 times, that we would have a connection that virtually took you back to the library, but not a part of this project, although designed to connect to this project. Hope that clarifies that. And though you could.
Let me see if I can add a little more, maybe on a more technical side. So as a part of the traffic impact study that we had to do, again, in accordance with and under the direction of the MOA and the DOT, part of what they specifically asked us to do was, given a weekday evening event that has, let's say it's a basketball game with a tip-off of seven o'clock, we're going to be placing pedestrians on the north side of Providence that are going to want to use our intersection at Providence and Wellness to cross. We've got vehicles that are trying to move through that intersection. The agencies asked me to assure them that the intersection will work acceptably, that pedestrians can cross safely, and that vehicles can traverse through the area without undue impedance. That was fundamentally the test that I had to meet. And in fact, the findings of the analysis do exactly that. Specifically, what I had to do was to estimate the kind of pedestrian demand that would occur, because we're wishing to park people on the north side of Providence and cross them, as well as the vehicular traffic that's expected to be occurring at the intersection in advance of the event. I had to put all of that demand into that intersection and then do the analysis to determine whether or not, quote, "it would work." And the findings are clear that it does in fact work. Further, because this is a signalized intersection, the crossings are striped, it is a lit, illuminated intersection, and it is a place where pedestrian activity is already occurring every day on a very regular basis. Motorists that travel through this area expect pedestrians. Pedestrians know the intersection and know how to use these crosswalks. Pedestrians know the intersection and know how to use these crosswalks, because the signals and crosswalks are prevalent throughout the community. So it's a known method of providing safe pedestrian crossings. As such, and through the evidence of the analysis that we've done, we've demonstrated the capability of the intersection to accommodate the demand, both pedestrian and vehicular, simultaneously, and to do it acceptably in accordance with the standards. So by those analyses, we're assured that in fact it does and will work and provide the safety that we're all concerned about.
If I could add one less-technical illumination here. Part of our requirement to get our certificate of occupancy with the municipality is to prepare an event plan. How are we going to manage traffic and pedestrians on the site during major events? And that's not developed yet, but that will be developed and approved by the municipality. And it may very well include bodies and the traffic control people at this intersection if it's deemed necessary for safety.
Thank you for your response. Any other board member questions? Does staff have any questions, the petitioner? Okay. Again, thank you. You'll have about 24 seconds for rebuttal. We'll open it up to public testimony. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in this case? So please come forward. Please state your names, spell your last name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Tim Potter with ALHKM, speaking on behalf of Alaska Pacific University, an adjacent neighbor to the east.
Good evening, Mr. Potter, and welcome back. You'll have three minutes for your testimony.
Great. Before you start the clock, since I have kind of a personal interest in this too, if I don't get it all out in three minutes, may I continue under my own name and interest?
Do you have anyone that could represent one or the other of those interests?
Oh, okay. I'll go with APU, and just know that I'll explain why I'm personally involved. Right off the bat, let me try and get going on this, and please be okay with it that as I get older, it's harder for me to bite my tongue, number one, and not get frustrated by how we don't do our job very well, keeping ordinances in line with where we are and where we're going. So on that note, and given the issues associated with this variance, I wanted to let you know that APU is in support of your granting this variance. In my view, staff has been extremely myopic in their view and their presentation to you as board members on this issue. Their argument is absolutely directly opposed to the planning efforts that have gone on within the community concerning campuses and the university medical district. Now let me explain why I say that. Let me find all my props. This is the Anchorage 2020 Plan, of which some of you may have participated in and adopted in 2001. On the land use plan map, it identifies a big asterisk or star and a gray-blue toned area, which is called an employment center, and it's a area of concentrated development. That led to policy and strategy recommendations that there be a university medical district study done to shed specific detailed planning light on this area. So of the entire Anchorage Bowl, three areas were identified as this name and type of use. It's special in its very nature, and it gets more special as you start looking at the university medical district plan, which is this document, which was then adopted in 2003, and of which I worked on. It's very clear, when you go through this plan, that there were two basic options laid out. One was called an integrated campuses, and the other one was sub-districts. If you read through and get to the recommendations, the recommendations are for the integrated campuses plan. Again, we've got very specialized circumstances associated with these campuses, Providence, APU, UAA, and the native medical facility, being located here, and this will never be reproduced in Anchorage Bowl in the future. That's why this area is very special. Also in this plan, they call, and one of the key items, is that there needs to be, in zoning, now the area's zoned PLI, it does say under zoning, it is recommended that public lands and institutions, PLI zoning, be retained and modified to address current and anticipated institutional needs more directly than the existing code allows. I'm getting a red light?
You are getting a red light, but just a second here. I think you are presenting some information that's useful to the board, and would, under my ability to interpret AMC, whatever the code is, she'll could find it for me. It's in the board's purview to provide short-term extensions where warranted.
Or just ask if I have anything else?
Under 21... Well, we've been through that game before. Let's see if we can do it another way, Mr. Potter. 2112, 320, Part A, would like to extend your testimony for an additional three minutes, but request that you tie things into the seven standards that we need to vote upon.
Right. And I want to make sure that you understand how, from a planning standpoint, this works from a large-scale planning to get more specific. So the comprehensive plan, which is required by law, is supposed to be implemented by then district plans, which the UMED district plan did. You take those recommendations, and those are supposed to go forward to changes in the code that help implement what the goals, policies, and strategies are within those documents. So here we go with Title 21. It's been around a long time, didn't always know, and I'm not blaming it, that it wasn't aware, and the people that worked on it weren't aware that things were changing. So in that vein, we do have the PLI district, and this is what created the situation where, if you're going to have required parking or shared parking on the other side of a minor arterial or greater, that you have to get a variance. It's prohibited. So keeping in mind that you start working through that, and now you have the provisionally adopted Title 21, which is what the comp plan said to do, it's what the UMED district plan said to do, and we've been working on it for a decade, and that's part of the problem. Within two years of the adoption of the UMED plan, the University of Alaska hired me and utilized their on-staff attorneys to work up a master development plan. It was called institutional master planning for institutions that were universities and hospitals, major facilities, and the goal was to have them integrated in the way that they are planned. So if you had multiple tracts of land within a campus that was all contiguous property, then you could plan it in total, and you didn't have to have required parking for that specific project on that specific parcel. You were supposed to do the best thing for the area. And the UMED district plan really pushed for an integrated use, not so that each use or each group or campus would have its own parking and own parking and own parking. If there was a multiplicity of uses that could go into that parking and use it in a shared way, that was a betterment to the area, and that's what everybody's been trying to work on and do. Again, the problem is that the campus institutional planning that was written eight years ago and has been sitting in the process, although it's provisionally adopted, has not been brought forward as an independent item, which had been requested. And the reason I think this is so important is that, under applicability, one of the key phrases is, "The process provides an alternative to the procedures and development and design standards of this title for institutions seeking to develop large, complex sites with multiple buildings and uses following a contextually aesthetic design theme." So when you take that a step further, this is the last thing I have to say, is that you go to development and design standards. So within this program, you would then, the institutional master plan shall include the elements listed below, and one of those is transportation and parking management, which this campus plan, the plan for the arena, has done and are required by what the UDC approved last night, to have a parking management plan as part of their TIA approval as well. It goes further to say, "These elements may set different standards than those found in Title 21. The plan shall list the specific sections of Title 21 for which different standards are to be established by the master plan and provide rationale for any different standards." So purported that you could do that and create something different.
Thank you, Mr. Potter.
And I would love, Mr. Fink, to ask me a question, any question.
I believe I'll award the floor to Mr. Dunham first.
Can you speak in your microphone? I can't hear you out here.
Mr. Potter, would you continue on with your discussion there?
Well, there were a couple of key issues, and one is in direct response to trying to prove how archaic the existing code is, that if you really go to it and look at it, to express how archaic this is, since someone brought up a grade-separated pedestrian crossing, I believe, in the way that I read the current code in black and white, is that even if you had a climate-controlled skybridge crossing Providence Drive, you'd still have to come to this board and get a variance, if you were going to have your required parking or shared parking on the north side of that road. Because I don't believe, at the timeframe that the code was written, anybody really anticipated this issue, and they certainly didn't anticipate skybridges, of which UAA does have plenty as their spine, but I don't believe that the code, as it's currently written, I don't believe that's an answer, because you'd be back here again. Additionally, there has been a ton of public money spent on Providence Drive recently to put in new signalization and trail crossings for the Chester Creek Trail Connection Trail that goes through the greenbelt within Providence's campus. So it's interesting to me to look at how the public can put major infrastructure facilities in and direct the public across this minor arterial road, and it's okay. But if you want to do what all the other plans have told you to do by integrating and getting the best benefit out of the least amount of infrastructure, you can't do that. That's basically it.
Mr. Dunham, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah. Mr. Potter, you had mentioned in your testimony earlier that that plan had recommended traffic management consortium of some kind between the campuses. Do you know if that's actually happened?
The discussion, and that's part of why I'm here, the arena project and some of the potential implications to increase traffic and actions that the state was going to take on Elmore raised the issue from APU's standpoint. We have worked with UAA, and they have committed to the couple of items that we had concerns about, about spillover parking, and the issue of University Lake Drive ingress egress and a potential median. Those issues, in my view, have been resolved. There's a commitment to continue working with APU to make sure that there's no issue as a result of this, and they've committed that. In fact, if there is a time in which there is, there are people parking on APU's property as a result of demand for parking, that it will be managed, and it will be their cost and their responsibility to do that, not APU's.
Any other board member questions for Mr. Potter? Staff have any questions for Mr. Potter?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Thank you, Mr. Potter, for the information.
Thank you. Let me gather my toys.
So as Mr. Potter is taking the library home, is there anyone else from the public wishing to testify in this case? All right. So seeing no one else wishing to testify from the public, I believe the petitioner had about 24 seconds left. If there was any rebuttal desired by the petitioner, I'll allow that.
This is a large public project, $109 million, fully funded. Most of the time, it'll be, parking will be contained on the site as designed. 10 times out of the year, it extends across to facilities designated for parking in crossways that are intended to cross pedestrians safely. The traffic analysis has been accepted by the state, accepted by the municipality. Last night, the UDC approved this project pending your approval of the variance. We look forward to your approval.
Thank you, Ms. Turnedis. I do have a follow-up question. I think I gathered the response from Mr. Potter, but since you're the petitioner, I'll ask you, is that traffic management plan that Mr. Dunham asked about, is that finalized?
So there's a traffic management plan that's required in the transportation analysis that we will finalize prior to opening. That's when it's required, prior to opening of the facility. So no, is the question that we're still working at and are really done some initial work on that. We'll continue to work that in earnest as the building begins construction.
Thank you, Ms. Turnedis. Any additional board member questions based on that rebuttal? Staff, anything further?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. With that, we'll go ahead and close the public testimony and let the matter rest with the board. Alaska Board Member to put forward a positive motion in this case? I know it's been a while since we talked about it, but with Ms. Ferguson adding a recommendation regarding completion of that shared parking agreement as a department recommendation. Go ahead, and please state your motion. Hold on, Mr. Dunham. My mic, there we go.
Right. Sorry about that. Mr. Chairman, in the case of 2012-023, I move that the board grant a variance from AMC 2145080X3B, shared parking, which prohibits joint parking if this street, if the street separating a use from its parking is designated on the OSNHP as a higher designation than a collector, subject to staff conditions 1 through 5, and adding an additional condition number 6, which would require the execution of a shared parking agreement. I would like to add on condition number 3, that it not only mentions location and design, but maintenance of sidewalks. So that's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. Just a second here.
Could you repeat that last change on condition 3, please?
Okay. On condition 3, where it says, "Resolve with Planning Division, Location, Common Design, and Maintenance of Sidewalk." The rest is the same.
Mr. Dunham, a question regarding recommendation 4. There was some discussion, and the result of it is escaping me right now regarding the efficacy of the analysis for spillover parking.
Yeah, I didn't, I guess I didn't hear if that issue was fully resolved with staff.
This is something they will likely have to address in that parking plan that they need to develop and submit to the uni for approval, but so the commission, the board can decide whether to leave it in or not, but it was a comment that came from the traffic department. It's one of the conditions, comments that they had recommended.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to leave that condition in there, and if it's addressed effectively through one of the approvals that has to occur after this, then I think that's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. Mr. Fink, was that second yours?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Thank you, Mr. Fink. Mr. Dunham, if you'd like to, please go ahead and speak to the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I plan to support this motion. I find that condition number one is met, and I agree with the staff's finding on that. I think that Mr. Potter brought up some good information about the physical circumstances of this UMed district, the fact that there are actually four major institutions in the area sharing facilities, and that, to me, that describes that this, there are some exceptional circumstances here that we should consider as part of the request for the variance, and that there's a plan, the UMed plan, although it's not officially adopted as part of the zoning regulations, does recognize the unique nature of this district, and I think we should show some deference based on that document. So I find that condition number two is met. I find that condition number three is met. It sounds like, from the petitioner, that there was a very public-intensive process that was behind the siting of this facility, so I don't believe that this is a self-imposed hardship. I think that they were working with the community to find a consensus solution for the siting of the facility, so I believe condition number three is met. I agree with the staff that condition number four is met, as well as condition number five, condition number six, and I believe that condition number seven is met, because I believe this is a minimum variance request.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. Mr. Fink, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would, I also intend to support the motion. I would associate myself with Mr. Dunham's comments. In many ways, I see this as putting a round peg in a square hole, really. I'm not sure the code was set up to address this sort of issue and this sort of request, so I think Mr. Potter raised some good issues. I see our piece, I guess, is fairly narrow. It's whether we're going to approve overflow parking of 150-something spots to the north of Providence Drive. There's a huge public process involved in this, and different, people have to sign off on different things. I'm comfortable with their proposal, and again, I would, as far as the standards, I agree with Mr. Thomas' analysis.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Any other board member comments? I do intend to support the motion as well. I did ask quite a few questions, hopefully not ad nauseam, regarding impacts to that particular intersection and concerns for protection of public welfare and safety considering at-grade pedestrian crossings there. And I don't dispute Mr. Potter's comments that if an elevated crossing were included in this proposal, that the petitioner would still need to be here before us today. That said, personally, I'd like to see an elevated crossing, but because it's not there, doesn't rise to the level of me denying the variance request, so I do intend to support the motion. All right. With that, let's go and vote. That motion passes with six yeas votes. May not be up on the screen yet, so six yeas votes for the record. Six yeas votes, three absent, so the motion is approved. I must read for the record, "Every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face that it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or the distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court." Thank you all for your attendance tonight, and thank you to staff.
Thank you.
That public hearing portion of tonight's meeting is closed. Don't believe there are any reports, any reports from staff?
We emailed you, Mr. Chairman, some evaluation or any valuation sheet sample a week or two ago. We'd like to distribute them formally next month and really encourage your input now if you'd like to see some things or changes on the form itself, and then very much encourage your participation in filling them out and mailing them back next month. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burd. I apologize for being unaware of that evaluation. Did it just come to me or to other board members? If it was just to me to distribute, I'll check my multitude of email accounts and see if it went to one that I'm not used to using, but I haven't seen anything.
Mr. Chairman, I'll check on that. It could be my mistake, but it was my understanding that they were emailed out, just as a review item not to be filled out yet, but there's still time. We can do that again.
All right. The only thing I have is that I believe we should be holding elections during our next meeting, and if there are absences, I don't believe that excuses you from being voted in.
Isn't that where absentee ballot comes from?
That's right. That's exactly right. So thank you all. Please stay safe out there. I don't know what the roads are like, but I'm sure they could be better. Meeting next month. How are we looking for attendance? What's the date?
It's March 15.
March 8.
March 8.
March 8, the second Thursday, 8th of March. Good, okay. A multitude of cases, or are we about normal next month?
I believe about normal, if I recall, four.
Okay. All right. Are there any additional board member comments? We'll close out the agenda and conclude the meeting. All right. Again, thank you all. Meeting's closed.